Is there a motion to approve the agenda or is there any change in that or open to a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, motion made second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, public comment. Anyone wish to address the council for anything? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have four dot one, the approval of minutes for the February twenty-third regular council meeting. The four dot two, approval of minutes for the February twenty-third work session meeting. For three, approval claims for the month of March. The four dot four, approval of check summary for the month of February. And four dot five, approval of building permit report for a month ending February fif- twenty fifteen. Four dot six, approval of fire department report for a month ending February fif- twenty fifteen. And four dot seven, approval of sheriff's department report for a month ending February twenty fifteen. Any of those things need to be pulled out or is there a motion to approve those? Items as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, five dot one, acceptance of city mayor's twenty fourteen audit. Luann.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Abdouiken Myers LLC has completed its audit of the city's twenty fourteen financial records. Kevin Canopick, who is present, will be here to present the audit for your consideration. Attached to the memo were the audit and the management letter for your review. And then, as you know, you know, we paid twenty thousand dollars for this audit and I often think about, do you know, how intimate are you with this audit? So many of your actions of the city council are reflected in the audit. And I've prepared that one sheet and I'm gonna go over those different pages of you just very briefly about information that you can gain from the audit if you ever wanted to be able to. So, I'm gonna start right on page nineteen where we talk about revenues and expenses and government activities.
And do you have a copy? I don't have a copy of that.
Oh, I didn't give you one, but, hold on. Um, do you have yours Luann? No, a copy of the audit. Yeah, I emailed it, I emailed it to you separately.
We'll share. You got an extra one?
I've mailed the audit to you separately, in a separate email. Did you not get it?
I don't think I got that.
'Cause I sent the audit separate because...
When did you send it?
Right after I sent the package. I wonder if it blocked it because, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Okay. I will look, but I did send that.
I'll check too, but, go ahead.
And I even wrote that one too, so... Okay, so starting on page, page eighteen, page nineteen of the audit. Nineteen shows the expenses and, and program revenues. And you can see on like general government, public safety, um, uh, shows the revenues that we get for, for those different areas. That doesn't include the property taxes, but the general miscellaneous revenues. And this shows the revenues by source from the government activities on page nineteen. You can see again business type activities on the next page, on page twenty. As you go over to page twenty-two, it shows our capital assets, like we talk about, we talked about depreciation. But this shows what we own and what we, um, what the value is on our land. Our land improvements, our building, our infrastructure. And then it also gives just a snapshot of the outstanding debt. And that is in more detail back on page fifty-two, fifty-four, which I will go through that a little bit more with you when we get down to that part of the audit. But this gives you just a snapshot of, of what is, what is owed by the city for general obligations and debt. Um, page twenty-eight, the statement of activity. You can see again, general government, and if you think about back when the resolution was done, these are the numbers that appear in that resolution when you approve the general fund budget. Those are the numbers that you would see now in the twenty fifteen audit from December of twenty fourteen that were approved. And then the business type activities are the water, the storm sewer, and sewer. So you can see all the expenses, the charges for services, which are revenues that we get, grants that we, um, that are given to the city, and capital grants and other contributions. And it gives you a net change in, in revenues and expenses on page twenty-nine. On page thirty-eight, here's where you find our water sewer, stormwater utilities. And this again is just, gives you the operating expenses, the revenues, and it shows you the income loss at the middle of the page. You can see, where does income, is either loss or increase. And as you can see in the water and the sewer utilities, they were both losses. But again, the depreciation expense is in here. So if you look up one line right above, the very last one under the operating expenses, one hundred and ninety-one thousand ninety-eight for the water utility and the two seventy-six, six forty-six for the sewer utility. So, since we don't account for those, then the loss isn't as great in the, on the bottom line. Um, page thirty-eight, now go to page forty-five. It shows, that's the useful life of the depreciation again. I don't even talk about depreciation expenses. But again, if you look here, it ta- it talks about how long we depreciate out, um, our assets. And these are just, it's an accounting life of the assets. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's how long they will last. But these also appear in our ga- in our, I think it's our GABZ thirty-four policy that we have. So that comes back to be again reflected in the audit. Um, page forty-nine shows the investments for twenty fourteen and the totals. If you remember when I present my, um, when I present my, uh, report, uh, the page on the back always has all the funds. If you look on that line, there's an investment line also that says what the investment is, that fund. So you can, again, that information is reflected here, a- as, as a double check. They check to make sure that everything's been accurately accounted for. Cash and investments on the next page, page fifty. Fifty-one is the depreciation expense again. It shows how they expense everything out, the beginning balance, the increases or decreases and the less accumulation. And then the total amount, business type activities. Fifty-two is the transfers. If you remember, every year we transfer money that's left over from capital at the top, on the top half of the page above the D, you see where those amounts are that we transferred last year. Now we'll be doing a transfer again this year. And those numbers are taken out of the, um, out of the audit. Where it is my leftover in the capital fund in the line item of the budget. It gets transferred to a fund to be used for a major purchase later on. And then it, here's where fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five are all ve- are detailed about our debt. Or the debt the city has. And each of the debt issuances here have detail. It illustrates the total debt, the year it was issued, the interest rate on the debt, and the date of materi- maturity and year-end balance of what's left to be paid. Now, this is just the principal balance, not the interest. The interest isn't reflected in, in the audit. On page fifty-five at the top, if you recall, we refunded some, um, general obligation bonds back in July. And in fact, I just received a notice today that that was, or last week that that was taken care of in the documentation from the US Bank. So they have now closed on these funds and, um, we have, we're, we'll be doing a lower interest rate. Or we'll be getting a lower interest rate now. But the crossover refunding where we refinanced, that's two point four, two point seven maybe it was, it was wastewater funds. And then, page fifty, page fifty-five, restricted fund balance. Where am I at, restricted fund balance? I wanna just point that out to you. Where it talks about, um... It's, those are the restricted ones. The funds that are restricted can only be spent for certain amount, for certain items. Fifty-five like the EDA. Some of the park fund money can only be spent on park improvements. Um, they're called restricted funds and we have that, a policy on that also that we follow. When you look at page fifty-seven, it, this is just some notes that are kind of interesting. The risk management, here you can find the legal debt margin is three percent of the market value of the city, the debt that can be issued. Um, it shows the local government aid, talks about related party transactions. And then here it also talks about the conduit debt that was issued for, um, gross academy. So this is, again, these are your actions that you, some of these things that are done during the year as a city council. Page sixty-five is the combined balance sheet. This is where you find the year-end fund balances. This in, this, um, information is provided by me as part of my monthly report. On page thirty-two, there's more of the same information, but it's more detailed than, than it is on this page. And then seventy to seventy-three is the schedule of revenue and expenses and the changes in fund balances. This is budget to actual year-end amounts with the twenty thirteen actual amounts for your comparison. The auditor provides this in a format for you every year in the audit. It's, it's reflected. And then it appears where we get, on page seventy-two, in the capital outlay line items, where we'll take the numbers for the balance transfers that we'll do at the next meeting. And then on page seventy-four, it's just a summary of the financial report. The snapshot of the city's revenues and expenses for the year with a twenty thirteen comparison. So, it just gives you an overall, there's a lot of information in here. There's a lot of information that, that is used, you know, by staff. But also, if you wanna be more, um, have more information about what is going on in the city or what we've done, I think it's a good document to use. It's kind of intimidating too, but it really isn't. It really isn't, so, I'll let Kevin take it over from there, huh?
I'm gonna guess that anybody have any questions on what Luann put over that could maybe further provide some explanation on. Otherwise, um, I'll kinda go into my presentation for the management and some of the findings and results that, um, that, um... And if, and if you have questions afterwards, please let Luann know and she has the contact information I did actually get back to, you know, if you're... Um, what Luann went over was audit financial statements that I may go over. It's, uh, one labeled management letter. Um, but this is, uh, is a very, uh, broad overview and summarizes, um, that's intimidating, uh, audit financial reports to get some useful information. First off, the issues and non-modified opinions. Uh, this is the opinion that the city is looking for. Uh, the same opinion the city has gotten in the prior audits that we've done here. So, um, very complimentary of staff to gain us the information that we need. As part of our audit, what that opinion means is that we are assuring outside users that those financial statements are free of any material inconsistencies. And what that means is, is that we're now coming in here looking at every check that went out as well, every deposit that came in. How we're doing samples and testing, um, to provide assurance that anybody looking at these financial statements, uh, will not be misjudged. On the second page of the management letter, uh, there's two findings summarized. Uh, these findings come from our audit requirements to look at internal controls. Uh, we look at how persons are handled, receive payroll, on the utility billing process and handles as part of our audit. Um, the first one is a preparation of financial statements. Uh, this finding has been, um, in the state's court for many years. It's very common with cities of your size, um, findings there because of others on staff reports. And then Luann signs off and gives an approval. So nothing uncommon there, nothing, uh, nothing major concern with that one. On the second one, the limited segregation of duties. Again, this has been under court for many years. Uh, this whole background looking at with the personnel to receive payroll. And with the limited number of staff, those states, those duties cannot be properly stated either. Very common, the city has decided to have this. Just points out the council should be aware of that. Others issue and it kinda comes back to the monitoring at the end to make sure underhand, understanding that some transactions are going on within the city. On the next page, this goes towards, um, required communication. Uh, this part of our audit, we also make compliance. Um, there's a total, uh, opposite, the state auditor has seven-ish areas that we are under. And that, um, our audit indicated no, it's a, uh, we're not compliant. With that, I may jump ahead a couple pages, um, where you're gonna find a table and a graph summarized the general fund balance for the past five years. Um, you can see on the far right column, we analyze the current fund balance for next year's budget. Uh, so you can see that two thousand and fourteen, uh, next year's budget is about forty-two percent of that. Uh, the two other fifty-two budget. The city policy is that number is around fifty percent. Uh, so there's a key that I mind, uh, is the goal of the city. One thing to point out is that, uh, two thousand and thirteen, you're back on one hundred and seventy-two percent of that. This is due to the city setting up a new capital project that's been put in place of funds that cost funds. Um, we'll see if capital, uh, moves in the future. The next page summarizes the general fund budgeted revenues and expenses comparing actual amounts. Uh, so you can see in the far right column that the revenues were about a hundred and forty thousand over what was budgeted. But this is being used to more tax collections based on some buildings and taxes being paid. Uh, so like the terms of payment higher than expected based on more possibility permits on issues than anticipated. And also it notes that the city may receive twenty-five thousand for the issuance of that conduit debt. Uh, so, uh, contributed to, uh, that would be greater than budgeted. You can see that expenses were over budget by about eighty thousand. This is mostly due to the cost associated with, uh, the buy and find for the long-term property, so, gonna be happy in two thousand. The next page summarizes where the general fund revenues have been the past few years. You see that the majority of your revenue comes from taxes and interdual, some metal revenues. Um, very common, um, practice or results like that from cases that you have your side. And you can't see that interdual metal has increased, um, from two thousand and twelve, and this is mostly due to some of that LGG funding coming back as the, uh, previously, uh... The next page summarizes your expenses for the past three years. And you can see in the far right column, there's a peer group for capital. But this is, um, our firm compiled data that we request from the OLSA, um, to come up with, uh, the peer group average. So this is the average of cities under twenty-five hundred population. So, for example, a hundred and ninety that you see is that the average city under twenty-five hundred is spending about a hundred and ninety dollars per person on related general amounts. It's just a comparison tool. There's a lot of different, you know, items that go into each city. Each city has their own special needs. So, you know, it's just a comparison tool, so just take it for what it's worth that just because you're over or under, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that the city's spending too much or whatnot. Every city has its own special, um... The next page summarizes the special revenue funds and capital project funds for the city. Uh, the special revenue funds on the top, you can see not much seems there, not much operations. Um, the bottom graph portrays, um, the capital project funds. I did mention earlier that capital project equipment funds, um, continues to, uh, for the general funds. You can see that that's over one million dollars. It's a, um, first stage, uh, for the, uh, capital, you know, uh, for the, uh... The next page summarizes that service fund for the city. Um, one thing that's to point out there is on the bottom, um, chart, it summarizes where the principal spending are for the next seven years. You can see that two thousand and fifteen is getting going higher. Uh, with what Luann mentioned earlier about the refunding that this is where that cash was set aside to help to refund that money. That money was set aside with everything, uh, that's directed specifically to the, uh, the, uh... The next page is chart summarizes your enterprise funds. It did a math on the past four years. And it was chart of the water fund. And you can see from the top chart that the blue bar is above the gray bar for the past four years. And this is, um, summarizing it as the cash brought in from, um, utility charges has sufficiently met the operating needs, uh, of the fund. Uh, but as you can see with the green bar, that's, that's service requirements with the water fund. So that has been higher than the operating needs brought in. And that's, um, you can see the trend on the graph below that the cash balance has decreased from two thousand and eleven. About eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So this important to note that the city is aware of the rate that they're charging, makes sure that it's efficient to cover the operating needs and any future capital improvement planned in the near future. Uh, the next page summarizes the sewer fund in the same format. Here you can see again that the blue bar is above the gray bar, which is operating needs, it's expensive. Um, the difference here is that you can see that the orange bar allows the operating needs. It is enough sufficient to cover the expenses and, and the debt service, um, payment. And what that orange bar mostly represents is the tax levy dedicated to that fund to help pay off those funds. So as you can see from the graph below, that the cash balance has significantly increased in that fund due to that tax levy. And then last, please, uh, last enterprise fund is the stormwater utility. You know, same results as, as above, sufficiently covered. You can see there's sufficiently covering the dispersment. From two thousand and twelve, there's some large capital expense due to the fund from that, that was so high. But you can see from the most part that the fund has had sufficient, uh, cash balance to meet, uh, operating needs and capital, uh, coming up with this fund. The next page is the ratio analysis we do. Again, it comes from data compiled from, uh, top for the state auditor of cities. The population under twenty-five hundred. So you can see that two thousand and fourteen, though, for peer group average, that's N A. This is because you do not have the two thousand and fourteen data from the city yet. So it's always just laying in here, so you're kinda looking at where you came in in fourteen and, uh, the two thousand and thirteen to do. Nothing too much to point out here. You can, the only ones that like the touch base on, uh, is the debt per capital. You can see that that has been trending downward over the past five years. And the city has been paying out the debt and doing some things and, you know, finding those return out to, you know, the city money. So you can see that the debt per capital is a little bit higher than the peer group. But again, it comes out, so like I said before, each city is all different in operating needs, so, just use as a comparison tool. Um, with that, on the next page, right about midway down, there's some future accounting standards that are getting started being implemented. Um, there is gonna be some new taxes the city on this, um, the next year's audit. Uh, we're kinda waiting on some information from the state, uh, um, our firm researches these standards on helping Luann have all implemented those standards that he's, um, doing. That summarizes what else we plan on going over. If there's any question they have. On what I just touched base on, if there's any question that you thought of that, uh, that might have been over, if you have to answer now.
Any questions? Um, if you could, getting back to what Luann pointed out, the depreciation for the water utility and sewer utility. That depreciation figures, that based on some facts, I mean, some estimate of life of the various equipment or just a general guess?
It's, it's not, I mean, it is an estimate, but it's, it's not, it's not what I would call a guess. It's, um, depreciation like, a big part of your water is towards infrastructure underground. So, usually you see that the accounting life is tied to these projects, uh, somewhere between thirty and forty years. And again, that's not saying that that infrastructure and the need to replace, need to be replaced. And it's very important here, it just is an estimate required that we do for accounting standards. Uh, the state's, uh, city policy that they implemented for the water fund won't pass that. And as far as where the cost of that has come in, that all takes us on when the project is done. You know, how much you came in contract for how many twenty years, or you came, you raised on installing water and structures, doing infrastructure. The cost of those, uh, the low cost associated with those projects are, uh, that's a depreciation, yeah, it's an estimate, it's a...
So the infrastructure underground, how about the other, uh, buildings, waste water plants?
Yep, that is included in that too. So again, when that was constructed, you take the cost of what, the cost of the state has put up. And then, and that's the sign of life, um, I believe there's buildings you can see somewhere around forty years as well. So you take the cost, whatever cost to put that building up, divided by forty. And that expense, that line item that you see on the revenue statement, so it gets put in there for the next forty years until the huge depreciation on that asset equals on the cost of it. So again, that's not saying that the public worth building isn't still there and it can still be used because for the county might, um, this is required that we put something on it. And the depreciation can be used as a useful tool, um, you know, you can know the county might. You know, for example, if you have a hundred thousand of assets, pre- accumulated depreciation of fifty thousand, theoretically you have about fifty percent left life on like that street or vehicle, for example. It gives you an idea maybe when you have some major, um, capital improvement needs coming up. Not saying that, that it, that it is, but this gives the city a general idea of maybe when they have a big project coming up.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Luann, I did get it, it was just, I just, I put it in the wrong spot, I didn't, so, sorry.
I thought I sent it, yeah.
No, it's not, it's not.
Yeah.
I mean, do you wanna keep those? You can, because we have extras, if you'd like to have it, to look at.
I'll keep mine just too.
And I'll get, there's more, you're right.
Okay, uh, then I guess, uh, if there's no other questions, then we would need a, uh, motion to accept the, uh, twenty fourteen audit as presented.
Second.
Your, any for discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving on, um, thank you very much. Let's see, five dot two, residents request, three sixty-nine, Foxtail Glen.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, city staff has received a request to park a semi-trailer on the city street for fifteen days. The residents at thirteen sixty-nine Foxtail Glen are leaving the community and need the extended time to be able to load the trailer. Staff did inform the resident, city code does not allow parking on city streets overnight. So the residents coming for the city council to request deviations from the code. I provided you with the overnight parking and commercial vehicle rule, um, so that you have that. So I told her she could come here and, uh, talk to you about whether you wanted to deviate from your code or not. She is Lynn Tita, I believe it is. She is Judy, I'm sorry. You, she is present tonight too, so... I, they received the email that she sent me, yeah.
I did.
So their request is to be able to, um, park that trailer from March thirteenth to March twenty-seventh.
Is it on the street or in a driveway?
I don't think it would sit quite in a driveway. Forty-two feet, we, we don't have anywhere to, we're gonna be headed. Um, when we're being in our house, we'll start to check when we're there. So we have to get everything to the, um, when they're ready to go to start the project. And then we're gonna be, we're gonna have to, we're gonna get somebody to help us with, um... My parents lives around and his father had it that bad.
Is that, that's a main street, right?
It's a, it's a call site. It's a call site.
Uh, I guess, just speaking from experience, I helped, uh, one of my family members move twice in the last few years. And I know they did the same thing. And I guess I, I, if, if anything, if we do it, I would, I'd just like to see a notice put on the trailer that has been approved by the city council to let it, that there are some people walking by or see that this has been approached in the right manner. Yeah.
So maybe we should post something in like, yellow, special permit issued by the city mayor for parking, exception to parking rules from March thirteenth to March twenty-seventh.
And that, I can't, to me that'd be fine. I guess, I don't have any problem with it. Plus, somebody else says, uh, please say so because...
As long as the move date is on there.
Yeah.
And it doesn't sit there for, before we...
I'm just saying, what is it? Hopefully it doesn't snow, but would you guys be willing, be able to work around the trailer? I would really hope it's not gonna snow. I'm just gone, I want it to be sprayed.
So I think a motion approving that request would be in order, um, and directing staff to pu- uh, post a special permit.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion made, is there a second? Yeah, motion made second to approve this request. Any for discussion?
So if you just let me know when it gets there, or we'll get you the slip to post it on it. Maybe drop it at your house and put it in the mail to you. and make sure it gets posted on the trailer, okay?
The question I had was, we got any concern with weight restrictions going on in this neighborhood?
What, what are the dates here?
March thirteenth through the twenty-fifth, and road restrictions as well, that are going on Wednesday.
That'd be my concern, didn't require a lot of their water, damaging, is that road got too, uh?
It's a six ton.
Yeah, but six ton.
Per axle.
Per axle?
Per axle.
Okay, I don't think the household is going to have that much weight.
On axle, it's usually.
You aren't thinking of a blanket, right?
I.
Even when there are weight restrictions, communities can waive those requirements too. So I mean, if, if we don't think it's going to be that close, then I, I don't know that we need to be concerned unless you want to waive the requirement. Guess that's up to you, again.
When the garbage still dries every day, and it's lost.
Right, and, and I just.
It's not like it's the only thing on the list.
I remember from one of my daughter and son and family, and the little one moved up from Alabama, they had under six thousand pounds, so household stuff. They had three bedroom, a lot of stuff, awful lot of stuff. Okay, so I guess is there, do we need to?
Yeah, motion is second.
There's motion is second, uh, we just like go with that then, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, um, further discussion on C I P for water and sewer plants?
Mister Mayor, councilmember, city council had discussed the capital improvement plans for the wastewater treatment facility and the water plant at the February twenty-third, twenty fifteen council work session. Council requested that the item be placed on the next council agenda, along with information on the amount of depreciation from the audits for sewer and water funds. The amount, uh, the depreciation amounts here below are from the city audits. Uh, staff is requesting direction on the C I P plans if council wants to engage the services of Bolton Mink. The motion approving the services would be in order, so I don't know what you had decided you wanted to do. I know that I, we were doing this, part of the reason we did this was so that we could then do sewer and water rates, to be sure that we, make sure we have enough money. But we could also use the depreciation amount, um, if we wanted to do that, so I think that's why it's back here. Uh, we can try to do it with depreciation amounts, if that's what you want to do, see how those rates come in.
Okay, if the C I P, if we go with, and Bolton Mink do it, they're going to give us a number that we should be budgeting each year for replacement costs, right?
Correct.
So they may say, okay, you may need fifty thousand dollars a year for the sewer plant.
Yeah, they're going to put life on each piece of equipment.
Okay. I'm afraid it's not going to reduce their costs, which.
Right.
Their cost is going to be, upfront cost is going to be huge regardless.
Why do we absolutely need this?
Well, I think we discussed it in length last time, personally, why we, we think it's important, you know, it's a tool that council can use to identify the replacement cost times and the money it's going to cost to do these things, whether or not, you know, down the line when they come due, that it's necessarily units of wood and stone that happened. I mean, this is a working document that can be changed every year, can change every year based on, you know, the existing condition of the equipment. But it's just a proactive tool used for you, for this council and for staff and for future councils and staff to look and see what they have coming up and start the major expenditures to that facility, so that's the reason why I brought it up, you know, whether you decide to do it or not.
Is there a reason why we can't do something like this, staff based, and plan for the future that way, instead of?
You know, obviously, you're talking a lot of dollars, you know, and you're talking some, you know.
A lot of research on something that really.
Obviously, a lot of dollars, uh, looking into researching, you know, the difference, you know, there, there's a little bit of, you know, some stuff that they, that the engineers have to do. And they have to, they have to verify and they have to stand behind your costs. There, that's, that's why you look at a professional like them to do that type of work, so if somebody, you know, challenges you on plan, you can say that with your best, best efforts, your hired professional took this plan together, give you accurate numbers on the equipment, the software and the replacement times. But, uh, they should be done yet.
I, I.
So that's the reason why I hired.
But it's just not set in stone, that's what I'm worried, you know.
I, I.
Somebody on the roundabout out here, what that, what is that? That's just a, that's a roll, I mean, turn around and there's some lanes going on, why couldn't somebody just come up with a dollar amount and do that? You don't have, you don't have.
Because there's construction involved there and it has to be built.
It's the same, it's the same on this.
Right.
Well, first of all, I don't, I don't, I, with all due respect, Greg, I don't agree that the engineers are going to stand behind their figures. They're going to say, I've heard this enough in the past.
Well, that's what they, unfortunately, you know, when the time comes, yeah.
Um.
But, uh, you know, they're, they're intricate, you know, what they, what they provide it, you, they can check, you know, like.
They can change next week.
The best, best guess effort or whatever, but.
I guess I tend to agree with Tyson, that is, I think if we go, I mean, we've got, how many years of figures on this plan now that we've?
Well, what you have to do, I mean, once you see something, you have to say, well, we need to replace that.
Well, I, I know that.
You have to call at that contractor and you have to see what to replace, you know, and you have to find out some contract that's going to cost you. Today, take that piece of equipment out for the new one and some talent.
But it, that doesn't, that doesn't, just because engineer says it's going to last ten years, doesn't mean it's not going to break tomorrow. It could be brand new yesterday.
Correct, you can't.
So that, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we can go back ten, fifteen years and look at all the expenditures, you get an average yearly expenditure. We can compare that to what this depreciation, we should come up with a ratio of some sort, we can plug in and budget for every single year going forward. And then each year, each year, then you take the new expenditures, factor them into it, with a new ratio and keep on going forward.
Unfortunately though, Mister Mayor, that, you know, the, your equipment was brand new, so you are starting square one of that. But with brand new equipment, where you have very low.
Right.
Uh, you, so you can't base your past maintenance experience on brand new equipment, because there's not going to be.
Okay.
So after that ten years or whatever in the life of the equipment is, then you're going to start to see the, the service people coming in and the cost of the service people to replace parts and all that kind of stuff. So I see what you're saying, but it really wouldn't be a good.
Okay, I, I, I can understand that, I.
So, um, I think you really need to take a look at what the piece of equipment costs, and the installation charges, put it back in, or to rehab it. And then to, uh, you know, and then start with that figure and go forward and attach an inflation factor each year to that piece of equipment replacement. Whether it be a roof on top of the building, a new flat roof, you know, uh, most, good thing, most of our buildings, the new phase is all brick. So we don't have to look at a lot of features on that, but there's, there's a lot of different things that are on that building. So if you high back equipment, you know, down to the treatment equipment, you know, are going to fail and have a life expectancy too, and so. Can you put some kind of a number on it? Yeah, it's going to take a lot of research and, and we do have the numbers, you know, and I think we talked about that last time. And that's what the, that's what the auditor uses to come up with that depreciation factor. I mean, different plans, specifications, and what cost for the plant, that's what they're using, is that, you know.
Mm-hmm.
To come up with that number, so, uh, I mean, it's hard, I know it's always hard to swallow the engineering costs to put the plan together. But I will tell you this, once you have the plan together and you see it, and you have that document out there to use, everybody seems to really like that. I mean, staff, everybody down the road, I mean, that's a tool that you can use for a long time, so, but it's not cheap when you have an engineer doing it. I don't disagree with anyone on that, but.
Okay, what do we want to do? We don't want to come back and revisit this every two weeks, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve Bolton Mink to do the capital improvement plan for a water plant.
Is there a second? Okay, is there a second?
You know, buy a forty-five thousand dollar pickup and then start driving it, and check engine light comes on, and you take it to the repair shop and say, oh, what did I do wrong? That's a big investment.
I just have a question, so do we have to do both right away? Like, is it a two for one deal, or, you know, like if you don't?
No, it's.
The only reason I'm asking is, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent understanding all these numbers, but the sewer, we have, you know, we're not in that deficit like we are in the water right now.
Only because we levy on the property taxes, so it isn't fully funding itself, so.
Right. But I feel, I mean, I, if I was to look at this, I would say the water plant has more of an issue making sure we have the right rate associated with making sure we have enough money if something does really break. I think with the sewer, you have a little bit of a buffer with having that levy, if something were, because I mean, if something broke tomorrow, we're not going to say, well, I'm sorry, we don't have the money to fix that. We have to find a way and do it. I agree that we need to look at the future, especially being that we're already halfway through probably a twenty or thirty year technical life. But if we're having hard times following eighteen, what if we just started with one, see what that gives us? If we like it as a good tool, then we can use it for the other one.
And you might want to do the wastewater first, because the wastewater is real. It was old.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It was old four, and the wa, just for more information, and the water plant's old seven, so, so we're having that information.
Water plant, yeah, definitely the oldest, and the wastewater plant definitely had a lot more moving parts. Kind of a system, more continuous than what the water plant is. Right now, the water plant, I mean, it turns on, turns off, turns on, turns off. Wastewater plant is constantly.
Right.
Not that we.
Yes, here in the wastewater plant is much more aggressive, very, you know, than the water plant and, and also, just please remember that, you know, we have this capital equipment plan done. We are going to have numbers attached to that equipment, but it's not going to tell us how we can pay for it. But I think the land has gotten more, drill water, and sort of help with the rate study, that's going to help. But we also need that, we need a funding mechanism to show us how we're going to pay for that stuff once we have a plan or something identified. Whether or not we do it at that time, not necessarily always going to happen. If our equipment's in good shape, we're not necessarily just going to automatically replace it, okay? I mean, something more important, it might have to be moved around a little bit at one.
So I think we do things on a more of a reactive basis here, and it just seems like this isn't really positive, moving towards going to a proactive route. I, I would amend my motion to, I mean, I definitely didn't compromise, and we do one this year and one next year, and I think we're still moving in the right direction. That's more palatable.
Can you amend your motion then?
I'll amend my motion to.
Okay.
Just do one of the, do, should we?
And did you, uh?
Do the sewer.
Do the wastewater plant, okay.
Water plant this year and the, and the following year.
Is there, is there a second to that amended motion then?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made second to amend the, or to, to do the C I P for the wastewater treatment plant? Any for discussion?
Do you know Bolton Mink gave us that number because he was going to do both at once, or?
I guess we'll go back and just tell him that, I'm sure that, we'll just tell him that we only want one, and I'm sure the number's good for each one, because they're each separate. They would each be separate.
Tell him, tell him we made that assumption, that.
Well, we'll just tell him that.
That there's a lot of, two thousand dollars or whatever it is, whatever.
It's, it's tough to approve this knowing that you take the eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand dollars divided by the number of connections. We just up our rate and we're already taking a dollar per home per month, paying for another study. And that's just a study that we can work with. Um, there's data out there that says that wastewater plant may be taken over by a met council something. We got to maintain it up to that date, and I don't remember what that date was, but, um, I'm just concerned that we're spending a lot of money on that too.
The met council found, they were, they tried to do it way back when, and they decided not to, and we decided not to let them.
A lot of it's, they tried to convince both, I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
So I think it kind of shot the bell, and it's not included in the twenty forty plan, so.
I don't think that's in, in the near future at all, so. Okay, um, yeah, I guess I, I can understand the wastewater plant, I, I could, because I know what's out there and I know it's expensive stuff, so I guess I can live with one of them, so. Uh, any for discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, okay, one, okay, all, the motion carried, thank you. Approval of a replacement of a R A S, R A S pump.
That stands for return active water, I mean, who wants to know?
Turn your microphone on, please, please.
Uh, Mister Mayor, members of the council, we have planned for in the two thousand fifteen wastewater treatment facility budget, replacement of both the R A S pumps. They're located at the wastewater treatment facility. Both pumps have over twenty thousand dollars on them, and during our last inspection in April of last year, they were both significantly leaking water into the oil of the, of the pumps, or into the motors. This is due to the seals and seals and bearings going out of the pumps. When we looked, looked at the cost to rebuild each of these pumps, um, they're around twenty-eight hundred dollars, so I apologize, I do say in my memo that it was already capped the cost of the pump, but it was around twenty-eight hundred dollars to rebuild one of the pumps, um, rebuild each pump. I guess when I considered, considered that, from looking at the life of the pump and everything else, there's only a ninety day guarantee on these pumps after you have them rebuilt. It does not include a rebuilding of the wiring in the motor, so even though we're rebuilding and putting new seals and bearings in the pump, we're not doing anything to the motor, so you could spend twenty-eight hundred dollars on this, on, on a motor that's been running for, you know, for twenty thousand hours and the next day the motor could grind, you'd have to have the motor rewound and stuff like that, so. I think here again, we're looking at that, well, we've talked about the C I P, we're looking at a life design of a pump, and twenty thousand dollars in factory, factory standards, I think, is a good. That pump does not have to have been rebuilt or anything in that twenty thousand dollars, so they've done a great job for us in the ten years, almost ten years that they've been running. The council did approve the purchase of one of those pumps during budget workshop times to be purchased in two thousand fourteen. So we do have one on hand already, so the other one would be purchased with the intent of putting them in during our annual lift station inspections in April. This should also save us money, because they'll be out here doing our inspections on the rest of our facilities, the rest of our stations, and we won't have to pay for the traffic. I mean, there'll be some labor involved to put them in, but they won't, they won't, we won't have to have them out here, coming here on a separate trip to install those pumps. So we should save some money. So, we should save some money on that travel time. So, we have budgeted twelve thousand dollars for those, for the cost of both of those pumps. This cost, this pump, uh, we should have an attached quote from all of both systems for five thousand nine hundred and sixty. It's about a hundred dollars more than what we paid for the pump in two thousand and fourteen, so not a significant increase in it. But it's an identical pump to the one that we- we bought back in two thousand, December of two thousand and fourteen. So, um, with that, we- we would look for a motion to approve the quote from all of both for a new five worst P S P pump, you know, five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
So the other pump was purchased in two thousand and fourteen to be installed in April this year?
We actually, yeah, we actually have some- we have, uh, some, uh, time scheduled for inspection of our travel and bridge filter, if you remember. Um, probably don't remember that, you weren't sitting in council, Bruce might remember that. Um, we had a travel and bridge filter inspection scheduled, it was getting late in the year, and just based on some of the things that had occurred, we decided, council decided to spend that money, which was around six thousand dollars on that pump-
So we would have it on hand in case this other pump failed.
So, luckily, we have been motoring one, just the one pump. The worst pump, we turned it off, and we're just working on the other pump, so. Which we will still keep, I mean, we'll keep it on hand once we get both of the pumps installed. I mean, change oil in it, it may run a little bit longer, and we'll keep it as a- a reserve pump, so. But, this is going to get those two pumps replaced, and they run twenty-four seven. One of them runs twenty-four seven, they never turn them off, so they run twenty-four hours a day.
So the new pumps are not in yet?
New pumps are not in at all. Now, we have one sitting on hand, we have one sitting waiting to be installed, which would be done in April. If we get the other one, the other one will be installed too. So, we'll have two new pumps in there.
Okay, is there any questions, other motion to approve the replacement of the P in order?
Make a motion to approve purchasing the second pump for replacement.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion made second to approve the replace of the RAS pump, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you, Greg. Um, authorization to terminate compost lease. I think we talked about this last- last session or work session, we know what this is all about pretty much, so it's more a matter of, let somebody wants to hang on to it, 'cause it looks at some funds coming from Carver County, so.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the city had entered into a lease agreement to deal down on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen. City staff at this time is requesting to give Mr. Dent his notice for termination, and the reason for termination is that the tenant has failed to begin or continue operation of the compost site. So staff's recommending the termination of the lease, and is requesting the mayor's signature on the attached cancellation and termination notice.
Has he done anything out there?
No.
Didn't- 'cause when he first came in, he talked about moving some cement and-
I believe not, no.
Do we- we can get out of this lease like it's in there that we can terminate at any time?
Yes, this- it came from the city attorney, he reviewed it, and he made- he wrote up the termination and leased a gr- the termination notice for him.
'Cause didn't you already ask him before?
I just-
And then he said, "I can't, we can't, I can't."
I asked him if he would voluntarily do it, and he didn't wanna voluntarily do it, so.
And so, but we haven't decided what we wanna do with this compost site yet.
Well, we've had several people come forward, we've had three different people come forward, and then I can go- I can bring you up to speed a little more on that, too.
What, yeah, I mean, I remember the work session, I'm- I'm just- so he's just not doing any, I'm just asking more questions for historical.
Right.
But, so let's say we don't decide to do something with it, are we able to?
We've talked about that.
You know, be able to at least manage it for a short term until a decision's made, or?
Well, part- part of the problem that's out there now is that there are several large piles of compost that have been left from RW Farms that need to be screened and gotten out of there. That's the biggest concern that we have. And he was gonna come in and ta- and do that, but he wants us to supplement him, because the cost of landfill, um, what's left over is going to be probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars. So, that's why, on the next item, I've been in conversation with the county about it. So we just need to- to be able to have the site so that we can get into the site.
Has Hubert looked at this?
Yes, yeah, Hubert's the one that, yes, yeah.
Agreed that-
Yes, he's the one that wrote the notice up, and I sent him the lease agreement, and, yes.
So we're within the conditions of the lease?
According to him, yes.
Has he done anything out there, Kyle?
Yeah, I guess that's just that question.
What did he do out there, then?
Nothing.
He's never been there.
He's not- he's never brought-
Well, he barked in the bush, but I mean, he hasn't touched any, anything.
That's probably trying to get out of it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Guess a motion to approve the termination of the lease.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I can second.
Okay, motion made to a second to authorize termination of the compost lease, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, then the next item is a request to- or request for funds from Carver County for that.
City council was presented with in- information on the cleanup of the compost site by No Stress Gardening and Landscaping at the February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen work session. The director of the city council was to have staff meet with Carver County to ask for financial assistance in the cleanup of the site. And staff did meet with Carver County staff on Tuesday, March third, to find out if the county would assist the city in the cost of the cleanup. Carver County is amenable to assisting the city with the clean- cleanup, but they're requesting a letter from the city asking for the financial assistance and the amount that we want. City staff and a representative from No Stress Gardening and Landscape presented the proposal that was presented to the city council to Carver County staff. The total cost of the cleanup of the site is forty-eight thousand sixty dollars, and this is without the sale of the finished compost. The amount of the finished compost will reduce the cost, but at this time, it's just an estimate. Staff would like to request the full amount, with the understanding that the cost will be minus any revenue from the sale of the compost. We can request a one-time payment of forty-eight thousand, or we can do it over several years. The funding over several years more- may be more feasible for county budgeting than a one-time lump sum payment. So the city's request can either be for a lump sum amount, or for, we can do it over three years, or we can do it over four. And I show you what that is, over three, it's sixteen thousand, and over four, it's twelve thousand one fifty. The proposed cleanup would occur within the next two years, and then in the essence, we would be financing the project, but we would be being reimbursed from the county once we would enter into an agreement with them. Want to tell you that I've had further conversations with Marcusson and with the environmental services in the county, because they have a new- they have an interim director in their department, he can't- he- they're trying to get him up to speed on everything. The county staff would like to also talk to Public Works, and see if Public Works wouldn't come and couldn't do some of it, that the county would rent the screener, use their loaders to load, and then use their trucks to haul it away. That's also another possibility. But they still would like us to present something, ask for the money from them. So I think if we ask for the most, and then if they come back with, "No, we don't wanna do this, um, we can do it this way," then- then that's what we'll do, just to get the site cleaned up. But again, I think that we should request for the grant, but I would like some direction from you on if you wanna do it over two years, or if you want a lump sum, two years, three years, four years, how you wanna present it to them. We ask for a lump sum and tell them that we're- we could ask for a lump sum and then tell them that we're amenable to doing it over a series of years if they'd like to give us something back, instead of us putting something out too, so, either way.
When did you say the project was gonna take to clean it up?
Two years, is what she thought.
So if we ask for, uh, the full amount in three-year payments, I think it's acceptable?
I don't mind two or three years.
No, it'd be fine with me, and I'd just ask for the full amount, and they come back, and you send their equipment or trucks, so we can, you know, just reduce it.
Right.
In kind, basically, is what it's doing.
Right, yep, so that, yeah.
Works fine for me.
Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion requesting, uh, full amount for forty-eight thousand, um, sixty dollars payable in three years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to request or to approve this over a three-year period, to ask- request this amount over a three-year period. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, approval of website public information roundabout.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, councilmember Stevie, uh, McPadden had questioned whether a t- some type of video on our website would be a good tool to use for a roundabout. This video, um, that is the link that's on here is the one that's being used on the Watertown Bridge project, and could be completed for the city's, uh, roundabout project. The cost for the video at Watertown was fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, but the city engineer did provide me with this other link that I put in the memo, which is for the Coney Highway Five project, and thought the city might be interested in this type of a message. So, I did receive from Andrew Buddy today, which is on- in front of you on your desk, that they would do a YouTube video, YouTube video, approximately two to three minutes, and it would cost about five thousand dollars for the roundabout, if you want that. I did contact Zach, but he never got back to me, if he could do something for us. Um, so I don't know what- which- which way you wanna proceed, or if you wanna even move forward with this, but I-
I'd say wait till he gets Zach's, and we can do some other form of information on what's gonna happen. The Watertown project is understandably a lot more complicated than ours. You know, they have a bridge and different things going out at different times, and so I watched their video, thought it was really neat. And, yeah, I- I never would've paid that much for it. It's ridiculous.
He even called me and asked me if I typed in too many zeros.
Yep. You mean fifteen hundred, right? Not fifteen thousand.
You should pronounce a period, man.
I'm curious to see how many people actually watched it.
The little video?
Link for Wa- the Watertown project.
Mm-hmm.
I downloaded it on my laptop, I was watching it to see, it's kinda cute, but, uh-
It is nice, it's very nice.
It'd be different if we were trying to convince them, but it's already been approved, but bids are being open.
Well, theirs is very informative, too, and it tells them which roads are gonna be closed when, and how it's all gonna go down, and-
That's all, yeah, ours is much more, yeah.
Ours is pretty- pretty simple, we can, you know, put some on our website, some pictures and drawings, so.
Right, yep.
Okay, so, we'll skip that one.
Okay.
Okay, approval of information technology policy.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, this is a continuation of the council review of the city mayor policies. Per council request, changes were made to the information technology policy. If you look, the email password number was changed to twelve, and then I added twenty point two, um, to address the backup, and stated that in order to create redundancy in storage of information, so protection of city information, backup should be created and stored outside in case of natural disasters or other emergencies. Other emergencies, I suppose, should be either via the cloud or with an approved device. So if that meets with your approval, the policy that you have in your packet has those changes in it.
Okay. And that was the only thing we talked about, so, as such, some other questions, is there a motion to approve this policy?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Is there any other further questions about it, or otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, data practices policy.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, that's also attached, um, this was a policy that was completed by, um, an attorney for a county that I was able to get off the lift serve, and when Dave Hubert saw it, he said, "Where did you get that?" It was very well done. So, we didn't pay an attorney to do it, but we kinda got an attorney to do it. So, I would a- I would also request that that be, um, approved, as presented.
If anybody read that all through, I cred- I give you credit. That was, that's I've been reading for a whole month.
Yeah. I read it before weekend, just a weekend.
It would take me a month to get it read before I fall asleep that quick. Okay, is there a motion to approve the data practices policy?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve the data practices policy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I was hoping somebody would be- will tell me what a Tennyson notice is, but, uh, nobody probably knows I'm not gonna ask.
It's a warning that's given to people that are important, for employees on data that you collect on them, I believe.
Oh, okay.
So a Tennyson warning, or- or at a time of discipline, you give someone a Tennyson warning, because if you're- you are going out to collect data about them, you're letting them know that you are.
Okay.
I- I really-
I first take a look by Tennessee, and I did- that didn't make a bit of sense, so. Okay, uh, conduit financing policy.
This is the policy, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that was used when we did the conduit financing for Girls Academy. So I would request that also be approved.
And that also is fairly cut and dried, doesn't involve any kind of city responsibility, financial responsibility, any of those things, so.
It lays out everything that they- that they have to do in order for us to do the financing for them to.
Is there a motion to approve this one?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve the kind- conduit financing policy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, approval of investment policy.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is the policy that staff uses at times to invest city funds. In the past, we've always done an annual review, uh, until two thousand and thirteen. Two thousand and fourteen, we didn't do an annual review, um, of the policy, so it's just here again. There aren't any changes unless there's changes that you would like to make to it.
And this is also, that's kind of taken into account by our, uh, auditors anyhow, as far as they double check all these things. So it just kinda falls in line with what they- what's required of- what they require of us.
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions about this? If not, is there a motion to approve this policy? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bruce, you need to leave? Okay, um, any other business?
I don't get a little help too much at this right now.
Any council reports, anybody? Okay, I will have something coming on the router and stuff, getting some figures together. Matt's been working on that, so hopefully next meeting we'll have something of that, if I get it to you beforehand.
We're set for tomorrow, then?
But that-
That meeting, uh, can't- is it Camden Town?
Yeah, Camden Town.
I believe Rod's going and someone else, someone's going with Rod, yeah.
Am I going with him? That doesn't-
I know, think so, did you want- did he want Jerry to go with him? I emailed Rod, I don't know, I'll- I'll check with Rod and find out.
So two fire department people will go.
Right.
Okay, then I don't have to go then.
No. And all I have is Moxie, um, turned out a lot better than what we expected. We have like fifty-one people that registered, um-
I had one more today.
Fifty-two, three of the park board members are on, so, turned out great, it's gonna be good.
Somebody's trying to send me a message, I keep hearing these emails too, and I keep deleting them.
From Moxie?
From Moxie, yes.
An email or Facebook?
No email, or something.
It's Jill, it's probably Jill.
It's Jill, it's Jill, yeah.
Well, she's relentless, believe me. Yeah, she will get you.
And I keep deleting them. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, is there a second? Is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.